I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson is absent today. Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I must question Heavenly Father, we thank you to take forgiveness, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for the people that came out, Lord, to hear your meeting today, God. Let it be a meeting, Lord, that we all agree, Lord, and everything goes like you want it to, God. Ask Lord to be with our country, God, our nation, God. Just be with everybody, Lord, that's got this virus, Lord, and everybody's home and sick, Lord, and the people that needs to be tested for them, Lord. Just be with them, Lord. We say, "Ask you to watch over them." And bless this meeting here today. For your name and for his sake, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I begin this regular business meeting, I'd like to make a statement. First of all, I want to say that I'm personally taking the situation with the COVID-19 very seriously, and I'm not acting lightly or without thought. As a council, we're monitoring the information that we're receiving, and our goal is to achieve a balance between exercising caution and providing leadership to our community while making wise, informed decisions. At this time, the first floor of City Hall is open to the public, and we've made modifications to our seating arrangement in the council chambers, which is located on the first floor. We're following the health guidelines by maintaining a six-foot distance with others and have designated the number of seats to not exceed 25. Since the size of our gathering is limited, we have encouraged our citizens to not physically attend meetings unless you need to directly participate in an item that is under consideration. We're providing real-time access to the public through Facebook Live, and our meetings can be viewed online via YouTube and on television through Gaston TV. A teleconference has been established to allow the city department heads and staff members to communicate with us and offer information and recommendations without physically being present. I would like to encourage everyone to seek information from reliable sources to assist that. We have invited the management director to provide the latest information source. Ms. Gaiter, if you would come and just give us an update on the COVID-19 virus.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
I don't know who was here before me, so I'm clean. The first thing I think we need to address is today's weather. This afternoon, we are anticipating some severe weather from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM for our area, and the question has been, will shelters open? We will activate shelter openings except for in those public buildings that are already closed to the public. Example, we Gaston Public Library. So that building will not be opened as a shelter, but visit shelter@edouard.com, find your nearest shelter, and you, as a family, are responsible for your own safety. So make the decision to whether you want to be exposed to COVID-19 or you feel it's more important for life safety at the current time to be sheltered. So as a responsible citizen, make a responsible decision. The shelters will still be activated. You can find the phone numbers on shelter@edouard.com. So call before you go if you have any questions about their opening, what time they'll open. They only open in a tornado watch. A tornado warning is too late. So if we do not get a watch and we get a warning, stay where you are. A watch means we are looking at the potential of a tornado. A tornado warning means there is rotation and we are expecting an imminent disaster. So once the warning goes out, don't move. Stay where you are. Find the best place and the location you are to stay safe. Okay, and in saying that, I thought that was important to address because I knew citizens would have questions about whether or not the shelters would be opened. I hope, as an emergency manager, what I say today doesn't get me in too much trouble with the elected officials or even those that have a disagreement in how emergency managers and healthcare providers and first responders are working these days. So if I do offend you, I do apologize, but from years of experience, when we're experiencing something that we've never experienced before and never seen and cannot see, we are encouraging a little extra precaution. When I moved back to Edouard County, it was a conscious decision that we made because we knew that this is where we wanted to live, a community that worked together, played together, pulled together when something happened, such as a tornado, or preparing for a hurricane to respond to other locations. So I know that the City of Gaston and Edouard County is a community that can pull together. And as an emergency manager, I'm asking you for 12 more days. 12 more days. What the governor's decision will be on April 6th, I have no idea. But 12 more days of social distancing. 12 more days of making sure that if you do go out, you clean the handles of your car, the door handles of your car, you clean your steering wheel. All those things we don't think of, our glasses, how many times do we touch something? And we put our glasses back on, and that goes right on our face. Those of us who are susceptible, have a low immune system, and I'll point a couple of us out. It's myself and you, sir. We both have rheumatoid arthritis, which weakens our immune system. We are susceptible to pneumonia quickly. I am getting over pneumonia from three weeks ago. So coming into public can be scary, not just for our citizens, but for ourselves because it's something new that we're responding to. So what we want to ask you to do is simply follow the instructions that we have been given by the CDC, and you can look at those at cdc.gov and by the Alabama Department of Public Health, ADPH.org. So look those up on the internet. I'm not asking you to stay in your house and close and lock the doors. You can go in your yard. I just saw a front porch sitter waving at every car that came by. That was pretty neat, just to get away from somebody I didn't even know. So go back to front porch sitting, just waving at people. We're from the South, and hugging is important to us. I have six grandchildren that I haven't hugged in over a month, and I know that as a grandmother, our senior adults are probably thinking, "When am I gonna get my hands on those grandbabies again?" The day is coming. Just be careful. Just be careful. Know if people have, if you've been exposed, you know, I want to ask you to be responsible. You to be responsible. Just do exactly what public health is asking, and that's for you to please go, pardon me, to please go indoors and isolate. Okay? Isolate. Just make sure that you have stayed away from those that can. I remember when I was a child and a teenager, my mother made one trip to the grocery store a week, and if you didn't get it or you ate it before it was gone, that was it. So think about your meal planning before you go to the grocery store. Try to make one trip between now and April 6th. One trip. That just gives us a little bit more room for those that do need to come out and get something to do so. Have the kids play in the yard. It's fun to play in the yard. You can social distance play, kickball, those things. Jump rope. If you don't have a jump rope, there's gotta be a rope somewhere around that, you know, improvise. I've seen people on social media making up games for their kids, which is absolutely wonderful. That is parent time that you'll always remember, and they will too. They don't know it yet, but they will. Some other important information for you to know is that daily, we send your elected officials a situation report. That situation report covers the unmet needs that we try to address daily. We have been able to address the majority of those relatively quickly, not like we thought was going to be a long-term purchasing process. Things have come in quicker than we thought. Yesterday, we did receive a shipment from the Department of Public Health, and that was for our EMS providers, a few of our nursing homes, and then two assisted livings centers. Those were items that were ordered through ADPH and then put into what you know as Web EOC, our request processing to the state EMA. So some of those needs have been met. We've been able to meet some of Gaston Regional's request needs. They're doing a wonderful job. A wonderful job. Those healthcare providers have to be truly stressed and under stress. They're still trying to do social distancing at home and at work. So truly, truly amazing individuals that I would encourage you to give them, not a literal pat on the back, but a Facebook pat on the back right now and make sure that they know that you're thinking about them. They are truly on the front lines of the unknown, and we want to support them all that we can. Another thing is, I checked again before we left, the state of Alabama is still at 196 confirmed when I left the office. There have been almost 2,000 people across the state tested. We are testing in Edouard County. That has been said numerous times that we were not testing. Testing is occurring if doctor ordered. You call your physician. Let your physician know what your symptoms are, and then they will ask you a series of questions that you need to let them know for sure if you've been exposed to the coronavirus. You need to know who that person is that you've been exposed by, though. And then they will do a doctor's written order, and there are two or three locations throughout Edouard County that are doing those testing by doctor's written orders. So, you know, we are testing. Does EMA have any questions so far or something you specifically want me to address?
I have a question and would love for you to address the social distancing because the young people here, I've been getting calls, they congregate. Please talk about that and tell them to stop. You know, it won't be but maybe two more weeks, hopefully, that they have to stay because, you know, it may not hurt them, but when they go home, it may hurt their grandparents or older people that have preconditions.
Right, that's absolutely the truth. A teenager or a child may not know that they're bringing it home to mom or dad, but if you've noticed lately, we have had several children who have been confirmed with COVID. So, and they've been sick enough to hospitalized. So nobody, nobody is exempt from this, no matter your age, no matter your race, no matter your religious belief, no matter anything. No one is exempt from COVID-19.
Governor, thank you. Thank you so much for addressing the testing concern. That seems to be the prevailing concern from a lot of people. And thank you for being the official voice on the part of both the City of Gaston and the county and all of the municipalities in the county. You're the official voice, and I want people to understand that. You do not want elected officials who are not experts in this area being the official voice. Deborah's the official voice on the part of all of these municipalities. So if you're looking for an elected official to be that voice, don't. You're looking in the wrong place. Deborah's the official voice. But one thing I would like to ask you, again, you've addressed the testing issue. As it relates to employers, what I'm finding is that many employers may be failing to practice within, the governor has allowed for an exception in her order for employers. But once people get to work, they may not be practicing social distancing. Can you offer some guidance for them?
Yeah, the same thing stands at work as is issued outside of work. You have to be in a location where you can stay at least six feet apart at work, and you need to have access to hand sanitizer and cleaning items. So as a business, a large business, make sure you just adhere to those. You may have to adjust your flooring. You may have to adjust how you work. But make those adjustments not only for our citizens, but for your business. You want to be able to keep your doors open, but if you have a group of sick individuals that's spreading COVID, then you'll have another emergency with inside that emergency.
It's been said that stagger breaks is an option, social distancing in the break rooms, using video conferencing, you know, all of that.
Absolutely. Use any means possible that you can to do social distancing at work. My husband works out of the county, but he works in a group that is nationwide, and so they remind each other, you know, "MySpace." That's their key word, you know. "Hey, MySpace." And, you know, they've just kind of gotten to where they probably use it too much just to get people that don't walk close by, close by. But, you know, if it's just saying "MySpace," that's just a reminder. In the South, we're huggers. We want to hug. We want to, you know, say, "How's your mama in the..." that kind of thing. So still say that. Just do it from a distance. Just high five, air elbow. You know, I don't even suggest getting close enough to elbow bump anymore. Just air elbow. That's good enough for right now. Any other questions on that?
I have one from where you started about the severe weather.
Yes.
Okay, with the Public Library being closed for District 3, that was our closest shelter. So could you tell the people where's the next closest? Because, you know, someone may not have the internet and all of that.
Right. We have two shelters in the City of Gaston. One is in Alabama City at Dwight Park, and the other is in East Gaston in the Green Pastures area beside, on, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the address. But it's behind Quality of Life, the park behind Quality of Life. What's the name of that park?
Hugley.
Hugley. Thank you. Hugley Park. Thank you. Yeah, those are the two City of Gaston ones. But then we have multiple ones throughout the county, so just check that website. You know, I want to encourage citizens, if we can do this right the first time, we may not have to continue it for any length of time. So let's just get it right the first time. You know, let's just, let's do our best to pull together and get it right. Become one of those people that's part of the solution and not part of the problem. There's too many problems right now for us to have to deal with individuals who've become a problem. So. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Gaiter, I was gonna make this at the end, but I would like to ask the EMA that whenever we meet, if you can't come, a representative can come because one of the things that I believe in is leadership. And we have to have some type of leadership so that the public will know what's going on. And that's what we, as local officials, are supposed to be about, serving our constituents, serving our people. And so therefore, leadership in all of this is very important. And if you can't come, if there's a representative that can come, it would be very appreciated while we're going through this pandemic. Thank you. We will continue with our business meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education and Recreation Committee, the Finance Committee, the Work Session, and Council Meeting that's held on March 17th.
Show move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March 13th through the 19th.
Show move.
Clerk, will you take a vote?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
No proclamations, unfinished business. We have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. Mr. Latte, doing business as Omar LLC, located at 218 Wall Street in District 6, has applied for a lounge retail liquor license, Class 1. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor? If you'll come to the mic and give your name and address, please.
My name is Rachel Latte. Use my address. 1703 State Street, Gaston, 35904. My husband and I are wanting to open the hookah lounge that you all have been discussing for several months. And we've looked all over Gaston for a location. We finally found this location, and we're wanting to apply for our liquor and tobacco license.
Can I ask you what happened to the location y'all had on Broad Street? It was when it was brought to us, there was some mention of it. It was probably gonna be in the downtown district.
We did not ever have a location on Broad Street. We were looking at locations on Broad Street. We've been working with Lisa Osburn on different locations. We could never find anything large enough to suit our needs there and for the price range there. And this building became available. It has been, I'm not sure. It was kids' cafe, so it had, it's a large area, and that's what we needed. It's basically boiled down to the size of the building that we needed.
So you don't think there'll be any problem there with the, across from the EBA, any of that kind of stuff, religious stuff across there?
No, I don't feel like it is because our hours will be different from their hours. We won't be open during their business hours. They're only open, I believe, four days a week from 9:30 to, I believe, 3:30, three of those days, and they're only open two hours on Wednesdays. And our hours will be in the evenings and at night, so we won't be conducting business during their business hours.
What about, as we've, I guess, I don't know if you was here or not, we talked before, the distance you have to be with a hookah bar. What's the distance? You gather around and smoke. The distance per person, what would that be?
As far as for this COVID-19 thing or...
Yeah, I mean, just when you open it up, how close will the people be smoking with it to each other?
We'll have booths set up, but we don't intend to open until all this COVID-19 stuff has gotten settled down. We won't be, we won't be opening during that time, but they'll sit in booths, and, you know, they'll come in in groups and sit with each other. I believe they're gonna be about seven feet, each booth setting will be about seven feet apart.
Okay, how many people to a booth?
Four people can sit in a booth, but only two people can share a hookah, and they have disposable hoses.
Okay, how close will those four people be inside that?
Like, it's like a restaurant booth. The four people will be sitting. It's like a restaurant booth.
So you'd probably say with, four people would probably be three foot apart, correct?
Yes.
At the most?
At the most, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Do y'all have any other questions? I know this is something new for the city, a new business that we've kind of come up with here. It's kind of something for my husband's culture that we want to introduce to the city and share with the city and something we feel like that would be something new to attract citizens.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you all want to sell alcohol?
We, initially, when we thought of it, we did not want to sell alcohol, but according to the city ordinance, we have to, 10% of our sales has to come from alcohol sales. So that was initially, that was not something we had thought about. Well, you know, we just wanted to have the hookah lounge and have people come smoke hookah.
Thank you.
Is this something, first I've ever heard of a hookah bar or lounge, when Jason Wilson brought it up a few months ago. So this is something that I realize is, I guess, emanates from a culture of, can you talk a little more about that?
Do you want to come up here and talk? Sorry, this is my husband's. Hookas are very common. He's, my husband's from Egypt originally. Hookas are very, very common in their culture. It's like, you know, they go to a coffee shop, and that's what they do. They sit around and smoke hookah. So it's very, very common in their culture. You want to come up and answer any questions?
Hey, I'm Omar Latte. I live in 1703 State Street, Gaston, and I would like to talk about hookah. If anyone has a question, you know, I'd like to answer. I mean, since I started talking about this business, I noticed a lot of people are really confused about hookah, what hookah is. You know, actually, it's nothing more than tobacco. It's a flavored tobacco. That's all what it is. And what am I gonna serve or what am I gonna do is you can come to my business and I'll just fix it to you or, you know, my people will fix it to you and serve it to you. You can just have a drink. And that's all. I mean, hookah is just tobacco. It's just a different type of tobacco. And I think, you know, I mean, from my own experiences, hookah is more secure than vaping, you know. Because actually, a lot of people now are doing vapes, and you don't know what vape is, you know. But in hookah, it's just tobacco. So that's what it is. And from where I came from, you know, I came from Egypt, they serve everywhere. I mean, when you go outside, like how bars are here, most bars or all bars here, they have to serve alcohol. They're the, the most popular thing to do is smoking hookah. And I know it's harmful as much as cigarettes. You know, I'm not saying it's really, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, nicotine inside it is more concentrated, but, I mean, I've seen people smoking it my whole life, and they didn't die instantly. I mean, they didn't die, actually. That's it.
I think my question is, I know about the Oriental because I've been there. A hookah in Japan, China, Orient is a group of men sitting around a pot. That's what you're talking about.
Hmm, it's gonna, yeah, but...
Well, you know, you're in a booth. These would sit around this with the ladies, you know, the night, helping them out. But at that time, it was open, and I don't want them to confuse that with what you're talking about.
No, no, no.
Because I don't know what you call hookah. I've forgotten what the Chinese, the Japanese call it. But anyway, that's the whole idea. It's the same thing.
It is, but it has no drugs. It's gonna be illegal for, I mean, it has nothing but tobacco.
I mean, I didn't try it, but I'm interested in other things.
Yeah, it is. It's like a water pipe or something. Yeah, it is, it's like a water pipe or something, a big water pipe that has a hose and actually, you said more than one person can share it, but, you know, I won't recommend that, I won't recommend it. I mean, it will be hookah for each person or, yeah, I mean, they're gonna have their disposable hoses, so they are not gonna share from each other, you know? It will be just your personal hose and after you finish, it will be thrown away.
Would you mind if I asked, is this your only source of income that you propose to do or do you have a current job? Is this just a, like a second job?
No, that's my only source of income.
You know, one of the things I'm struggling with, just to be perfectly honest with you guys, is that I'm new on the council, I've been on the council 16 months. A few years ago, this, this council passed a smoking ordinance and so it, it changed the face of smoking in, in Gadsden. There was, I'm probably gonna misspeak here and somebody can correct me, but there was a cigar bar that came, so there was maybe a, that got in, included, I think Derek might can address that. And then we did a vote that amended the smoking ordinance to in, to include the hookah bar. I made a statement earlier in the pre-council meeting, I think before y'all walked in, that I voted in favor of that. I now kinda wish I hadn't have done that. And it's for personal reasons, it's nothing to do with Egypt, it's nothing to do with, it's just that we had a, a set of rules and it's now we've amended those rules. And at the time I voted for it, I was under the impression this establishment was gonna be on Broad Street and, and now it's not gonna be on Broad Street. Apparently, it's gonna go to Wall Street, which is, you know, another part of town. And so now I have some reservations about it, just, you know, based on, you know, making a decision, maybe I didn't have all the information that I needed. And now we're at a point where we are where we are. So, you know, and I don't take stuff like this lightly. I mean, I think that, you know, Jason Wilson made a, Councilman Wilson made a comment earlier that it, things should be market driven. And I don't disagree with that, you know, the market will drive, I mean, you may open up and, and have a million people come in there. You may open up and not have anybody come in. So that's the market driven reality of any business. And so I think that Gadsden and the City Council, we want to be open to business coming to our city. At the same time, we've had these precedents set in these rules and now I think we stumbled a little bit. I, I, I think we've, we've made a decision a few months ago that maybe some of us wish we hadn't have made. And so again, this is the first time I've seen y'all. I mean, I, I don't know who you are, so it has nothing to do with persons or personalities or anything like that. It's just a law that's on the City Council books or codes and I feel like I voted for something that, that goes back and kinda undoes a little bit of that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm really struggling with, with how to move forward on, on, on this, on this vote, because it's, there's just a lot of other things that I'm, you know, that I'm considering as well, just the location. And I appreciate your explanation of the hours, how it's not gonna coincide with the EBA, full disclosure, I'm a member of First Baptist Church of Gadsden, I serve as a deacon there. We're very involved with the, at a Wall Baptist Missions Association, so I, I do have a vested interest in, in, in that regard. I've wanted for years to see Wall Street come back and to be revived as part of...
Actually, that was one of my intentions, you know? Because I know this area used to, my wife, you know, she grew up here and she said it used to be downtown Gadsden.
Sure.
So that was one of my interests, too. I was trying to bring it back to life.
Right, yeah, so I'm proud to see young folks come and invest your money and, and you wanna do something positive. There's things in the, on the books with the rules and the no smoking ordinance. I mean, it just sounds funny to me to sit here and say, we have a no smoking ordinance, but you're gonna open a hookah bar. That, 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 those are two opposite things. I mean, if you think about it, if you remove yourself from being the owners, we have a no smoking ordinance yet, we're about to vote on approving a liquor license for a, a hookah bar that we've already voted to approve. I mean, we, we voted, I think six to one was the vote back when we voted. And, and, you know, maybe being new at this, I didn't realize all the ramifications and now we gotta vote to approve a liquor license. I, I mean, I thought we were through with this back when we did it a couple of months ago. And so now here it comes up again. So it's just, it's like the, the gift that keeps on giving for, for me, that, that I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with it. So I'm, I'm rambling now and I probably got...
You said it was, excuse me, you said it was flavored tobacco, correct? It, it was my understanding, I could be totally wrong off, I don't smoke, I've had family members that did smoke all of life and died of cancer, you know, and, and I've seen how they died and it really affected me. But I was thinking I seen or heard somewhere on TV that they outlawed flavoring tobacco and vaping, is that not true?
And vaping.
Yeah, did they not outlaw that?
I know, but it's a different thing. I mean, vaping is different from hookah. Hookah is tobacco, but on vaping, you smoke chemicals, basically. You smoke chemicals, pure chemicals. It has nothing to do with tobacco. But hookah is only tobacco.
Flavor tobacco you're talking about?
It has plain, but this is not the popular form.
It's typically flavored with molasses or honey.
Yeah.
That's what it's flavored with. It's, it's a natural molasses or honey that it's typically flavored with. You buy it already flavored, it comes in many different flavors and you buy, it's just basically a tobacco, it's a wet tobacco with the flavoring in it, is what it is. But it's different from the vaping. It's much different. And, and the other thing I would, I would like to address is, you talk about the smoking ordinance and y'all amending the smoking ordinance and you shouldn't have amended the smoking ordinance. The way I view it is you didn't really change the original smoking ordinance, that ordinance still stands. And for me, including a hookah bar is no different than allowing the cigar bar. It's basically the same thing, it's just a different type of smoking in a different vessel, basically, that you're gonna use to smoke. So I feel like it, it's, yes, we're introducing the hookah bar, but we already have a smoking bar in town. So that's kinda, you know, my thought on that, it's, it's no different than the cigar bar, basically. It's just a different method of smoking.
I can't, I can't argue that point. I understand where you're coming from with that. At the time the smoking ordinance was done, that cigar bar was here in Olive Grandfather Den, whatever, but it was under B4, Downtown Gadsden. Now we're talking about, and we were under the impression that that's where it was gonna be, this is short and simple, we thought it was gonna be Downtown Gadsden. And we were a little bit, just because it's a cigar bar, but now we understand it's going to Wall Street, which was not the original intent of the whole thing.
We wanted to be Downtown Gadsden. However, we cannot find a building that, that suits our needs downtown. We looked for months, we worked with Lisa Osborne, with Downtown Gadsden, we worked with them and we have not been, we could not, we, we've worked since last year trying to find, before we even applied for anything, when we just had the idea, we've been looking for buildings in the downtown Gadsden area. But I believe on Wall Street, is that not, that's a, is that a B4? That's a B4 district as well.
It is a B4 over there.
Right.
Well, I, I won't get into the ramifications of the differences in this town. Or whatever. Wall Street at one time was a thriving street.
Yes.
About 15 years ago, we had a bar right in front of the gun shop over there. Three or four people were killed inside, one stomped to death outside. Down the railroad track, they put one in there. We had dope, we had people urinating on the side of the buildings and across the street and bank. We had a terrible situation. And in my estimation now, what we're doing, since we cleaned all that out and got it done, they were creating another situation. Not that you would be doping and all, I'm not saying that, but a situation where they don't, anything can come in, anything can come in. So that, that worries me.
Well, I understand your concerns, yes.
I understand, well, just being there and things going on, issues be going on that are not accepted by people in Alabama City, let alone people in Gadsden.
Right.
That's right.
I understand that, but, you know, like I said, we, this is gonna be his full-time job, he will be there 24/7. We do not, we're, we're not into the, this is someplace we hope that people will come, relax, enjoy smoking the hookah, maybe have a drink if they wanna have a drink, maybe have some form of entertainment from time to time. But this is not something we hope or intend to, you know, we'll do our best to control. We don't want a rowdy or out of control environment, because we're not those type of people ourselves. We, we don't, we want to have a place where adults can come and gather and enjoy and just spending time together and relax. So it's not, we're not wanting to open a rowdy, rough bar, that is not our intent or our purpose. We, and, and I know you can't control the public and you can't control the crowd, however, we will do our best to do that. We, we don't want a lot of, you know, we don't intend to allow people to do things, especially illegal things in our business.
Hey, you're well spoken, I understand exactly what you're talking about. It's just I wish we had never been uninformed about this to start out with. We could have all handled it, but we were missing form. We were missing form. Because we specifically thought or we really had the intent downtown. And I, I would say, well, I wish you would look at that further. I know there's got to be some place, and I'm not even encouraging you to open a hookah bar, but that's beside the point, too.
Right, listen, we'll thank you, because we've, we've been gone, we've been doing this for about 15, 20 minutes, so we appreciate you.
It's worn out.
Okay, we, we appreciate you and what is the, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'm gonna ask that we table this for 30 days.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, I'll need some clarification.
Roll call vote.
Let me do a roll call vote. Okay, this is on the motion to table for 30 days. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Worthy?
Yes.
Back?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
And Reed?
No.
Well, we have a three to three tie and when you tie, the motion does not carry.
So the motion fails.
The motion to table fails.
Okay.
Now we'll have to consider, we'll have to consider the motion as it is on the agenda.
Call for vote.
What is the pleasure?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Okay, we have a motion to consider the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
And this is a roll call vote on consideration of approving the license. Councilwoman Toles?
Yes.
Williams?
No.
Worthy?
Yes.
Back?
Yes.
Cannon?
No.
Reed?
No.
Again, we have a three to three tie, so the motion to approve the license does not
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Burnett Jones Wilson LLC and this is for the Structural Engineering Service for Park and Improvement at the Alabama City Center located at 2000 West Biggin Boulevard at the amount of $750. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sure move.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with JR Wilburn and Associates and this for the, is the compilation of long range transportation plans required by the Gadsden and Wall Metropolitan Planning Organization under agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. The amount is $85,810 with the city's 20% matching being $17,162. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sure move.
Is there any discussion?
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is authorizing agreement with Sane Associates and Company and this is for engineering and consultation services. And this is required by the Broad Street Operational Analysis and the amount is $49,916 with the city's 20% match being $9,983. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sure move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution authorizing tax abatement agreement with Summit Properties Partnership. And this is for the expansion of Farro Automotive located at 4330 Brooks Avenue and abate construction related transaction taxes and non-educational property taxes. And this is for a five-year period and this project involves a capital investment of The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Sure move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, it didn't say how many more jobs it would be adding.
It would be 50 more jobs.
Do we have the economic advisor where he could talk about this a little bit?
Call in to the city, is the city engineer? No.
No.
Bill Green.
Industrial Development.
Industrial Development.
I think somebody would have been here.
Bill Green. We had a contact number to ask Mr. Green.
He got him on the phone, right here. No, no.
See, this saying is not, it's not a valid call-in number.
Here.
I think he just did.
Okay. You can just put your phone. Okay, we've got John.
This is David Brooks and Bill Green, it's Gadsden IDA. All right, I'm hanging up then.
Brooks is on.
You got us? Yeah, what's the question?
Just explain the tax abatement for the Farro Project, the Summit Properties Partnership.
It's an expansion, creating 50 jobs and it's about a $6 million capital investment. And, and, hold on a second.
Can y'all mute your livestream on your end?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and so what's the question?
And then it, it also extends the, extends the non-educational property taxes for five years, correct?
That's correct. This is a five-year deal just for the expansion purposes only.
Also, it says the project's supposed to be completed by next 31st day of March 2021.
Is there a specific timeline for the completion of the project?
They're, they're gonna be through in, in 2021, I believe, let me look at it real quick, I believe it's June. Hang on, man, I'll tell you that, just a split second there. There's, uh, March, March of 2021 is when they're supposed to be fully operational.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
Okay.
Clerk, will you take, will you, do I have a motion?
We do, we have a motion in second to consider the resolution. Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our first reading is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property and this conveys half-acre parcel located off of Riverside Drive and College Parkway to Cook's Food of Gadsden to Cook's Food of Gadsden LLC. And this ordinance has been presented for first reading and the council will vote on it at the next meeting. There's no new business. We've had a department report. And I would just like to say that, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city staff for the things that they have been doing to put mechanisms in place for our safety. Because we are experiencing a great impact mentally, physically and financially. And this is a period in our history that we've not experienced in modern times. Businesses are suffering, families are, are suffering and employees at all levels, even at our city government, are feeling the effects of the COVID nineteen. We are elected officials and therefore we are committed to serve our community and to be leaders of our, our community. And I, as well as the other councilmen, are committed to remain, committed to that oath as far as the leadership is concerned. Three things. The past cannot be changed. Opinions don't define your reality. And everybody's journey is different. So continuously to practice safety, common sense and do all the things that you need to do to keep safe. Ms. Gaither didn't say it, but I think still at this time, there are no cases in Edgeworth County and so we should be blessed. We should really rely on each other and remember the scriptures that be anxious for nothing. Don't, don't run and panic it because it only creates chaos. So I personally, as a leader in this city, I want to be mindful of the fact that you all look to us for leadership and therefore I want to exemplify that. Also, I would like to say that we don't have any business that's coming before us for next week. So next week, we've already made the commitment or we've already reached the point where we have had two meetings this month. So we won't meet next week, but we will convene again April the seventh because there's business that we have to take care of. And I feel that everything we do is essential. And so we just thank the employees. You all come here every day to serve us. And I don't think it's too much for us to take two hours out of our schedule and come and do the business of the city. So at this time, I move that this meeting is adjourned.